One and zero.
Yeah.
Let's reconvene. Our Credit River City Administrator interview process. Uh, that started, we convened this morning at eight forty-five this morning, uh recessed at three forty-two. Uh, Amy, if you want to make that motion was made by Abe and second by Jay all were in favor. So it's five zero. Um, we will reconvene right now, uh, feedback shared by. Liza and then, uh, work on discussion deliberations after that. So Liza, I'll turn over to you.
Great, wonderful. Thank you. So Mayor and Council, obviously you've had a lot of information presented to you over this last month. You've had an opportunity to select your finalists where you got to see their resume, cover letters, video interviews, their work personality strengths. Uh, and then, once you selected your finalists, then we had them complete a verbal reasoning and mathematical skills examination. You're able to see those results, compare the candidates, not only against each other, but also see how they fit in with this level of leadership throughout the nation. We also took a look at their driving record, credit history, um, verified education. And then one of my favorite parts of the process is then speaking with their former and current supervisors. Where I got to have a nice deep dive conversation thirty to forty-five minutes long, where I asked them about their workroom responsibilities. Um, priorities that they could be proud of, um, their leadership style, how they deal with conflict when it's presented either by. Residents or maybe a council doesn't agree on, you know, proposed ordinance language. What their staff would say about their leadership style, strengths and even weaknesses. So you had those narratives in your package packet as well. So today was some of those final pieces of the puzzle where you had a chance to meet with them face to face. We listened to them during a organized or, um, facilitated public meet and greet. Then they also got to have casual conversations with your residents and then staff had time with them as well. And then you're face to face. So I'm going to inundate you with a little bit more information to help you in your decision making process. So this morning we asked your members of your public to provide written feedback. We asked them five questions, one general comments or general feedback regarding general impression regarding each of the finalists. What strengths did they bring to this role? How do you see them not only fitting in with this organization, community, but with partnering organizations that you work with? How approachable did they feel? Wasn't it? That was important to you. Your staff this afternoon then got, um, some sit down time with. With questions, a panel of questions, and they too provided the same feedback. So. Do you want to hear from public or staff first, or do you want me to student?
Student, the order in which the comments were received.
Okay. All right. So we'll start with your public.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Something you said earlier. I don't recall seeing, maybe this is only you see it, the intellect profile measuring verbal reasoning, mathematical logical reasoning. I don't remember seeing any of that from any of the candidates.
So the email that I sent last week with the link where you were able to click on each of the links and you had all access to that information. It would have been included in there. I didn't print it as separate and part of this packet that you had access to it last week.
And that's my fault then because I didn't click on the link because I thought that was the same information we got before that had the, the link to all of the candidates videos. And their resumes and all that other stuff. The first time we got it. So you added things to that link. Okay.
All right. So we'll go question by question candidate by candidate. So apologize for all the shifting of papers. So the first question is, what are your general impressions regarding candidate? Candidate Brett. Brett Gagin Pollock. All right. So we have your, your members of your public said fair experience, not the right personality for Credit River. Somewhat abrupt, but has some good administrative experience, high energy. No comment. Seems a little blunt in speaking, would be good at taking orders versus giving them. That was a question. Abrupt. Capable. Confident and capable. Love the energy and concise responses as a good grasp of the position. High energy talks well. What are your general impressions regarding Hannah Plonsky? Great personality, drive, enthusiasm, very limited experience. Very willing, but not a good background for the job. She would be easily manipulated. Open to learning, not enough experience nor background would be eaten up by some council members. Would be someone who could grow into the job and she would get the job done. Sweet. Likeable, willing to learn what she doesn't know, capable to. Confident, seems willing to hear all concerns. It's up to the task at hand. Inexperienced, but high energy. No experience likeable. What are your general impressions regarding David Carlson? Very experienced. Do not feel he supports the desires of residents to keep Credit River rural. Arrogant seems to think that we don't have a lot of choice in our density development. Has had experience with builders on this position in another town, but don't get. The idea that he is very approachable. Admitted that he didn't do much research on or of this area, which is a red flag. He didn't have any questions for us at the round table, didn't answer the questions, talked about other things. A little too talkative, maybe a little overqualified arrogant. Experienced. Didn't give a great vibe. A broad spectrum of experience, but long winded. Didn't like. What strengths would this candidate bring to the administrator role when asked about Brett? Your members of your public said did not provide any obvious strengths. Somewhat abrupt in how he presents himself, but high energy. Sounds like he will bring commitment to the position, but still not knowledgeable. Willingness to learn straightforward approach, but also could use background in a smaller town. As a get things done attitude, he would be a hard worker. Multifaceted. He would look for different solutions to the problems. Experience working under adverse, adverse conditions, energy gets to the point without droning on well organized thoughts, very positive. What strengths would Hannah bring to the role? Fresh enthusiasm relates to community and desire to stay rural. Some knowledge of working within Scott County. No comments. Excellent attitude. Um, for instance, work with people, no preconceived perceptions, good people skills. Fresh openness and honesty works with Scott County. She wants to get the job done, but listen to the needs of citizens is interested in doing well in the position. Open to new ideas, energetic willingness to take on new projects, friendly and articulate. Fresh start and positive. What strengths would David Carlson bring to the administrator role experience? Has experience, but personality condescending thinks he knows everything, but doesn't have a good concept of this community. Likes to listen to himself and avoided direct questions. No comment. Very knowledgeable, seems to have a lot of experience and specific issues for larger city. He has experience, is aware of dealing with past negatives. Experience, experience. Has a lot of experience, but wrong. Question number three, do you feel that the candidate created a comfortable and open atmosphere during your conversation? Where you felt you could ask questions or engage freely regarding Brett was very friendly and. Open missed some questions. Brett was a little short curt with his responses that made him appear standoffish and condescending. Yes. Yes, but he's a little too much, a little too forceful. Little abrupt than I, when I redirected or asked more about his answer. Yes. Was abrupt and a bit rude when he said he answered a question, but I challenged him and said he didn't. He just needed to restate the answer and not be rude. A little issue answering questions. And no, he was not approachable. Regarding Hannah, yes, was very open and engaging. Hannah has great interpersonal skills and a positive attitude. Yes, very open. Yes, very much so. Yes, yes. Yes, I liked her demeanor, honest answers to questions had, and many were that she would have to or do some research. Great, good and open. Yes, very comfortable. Regarding David Carlson, he wanted to control the narrative. I asked David a direct conversation about developers he is currently involved with. And he skipped to his work in Lancaster, huge turn off plus long winded. Yes, but went off on different subjects that were not asked. Kind of talked more than he listened. I didn't have a lot of chance to ask questions. We'd like to talk. Somewhat approachable. No, he was long winded and pompous overall, didn't answer the questions. Took conversation his own way and did not answer questions. No rambled on avoided answering direct questions. Fourth question, how describe how you believe this candidate would fit in with the city and its partner organizations regarding Brett? Seemed as though he could stand on his own. Brett's a little abrasive, but would not be manipulated, which I like. Has experience working in different settings. Brett is respectful of the fact that is the council that makes the decisions. He has experience wearing multiple hats. He has experience with military that can possibly translate. Would be a reasonable fit. No comment. May learn to fit. Would be abrasive. Describe how you believe Hannah would fit in with the city and its partner organizations. Some on the council would run right over her. Hannah would be easily manipulated, which would not be a good thing. Open to new ideas, her willingness to listen. And as a good personality for dealing with different issues that citizens might have. She would fit, but afraid she would get influenced by one or two of the council. Would be a very good fit. No comment. Would be open to learn. Only concern would be if she can hold her own ground. If our council was in a better agreement, she'd be a great candidate. Um, lastly, David Carlson, do you believe he'd be a good fit? I don't think that he would. David would align well with those that seem bent on extending sewer. Lines and developing the north side. David would make meetings for a lot longer. Be set in his ways might be too domineering. He has the experience, but I'm not sure about the fit. He didn't listen very well. He would or could fit by introducing new ideas and experiences. He has not worked with Met Council, but told us he pissed off the police union. Not sure if the fit is good coming from a large city. Doesn't fit has personal motives, not fitting with Credit River and didn't answer questions. Would not fit as he has an agenda. I believe he would be frustrated with our council. And then lastly, any other comments that would be helpful to the city council and its deliberations regarding Brett? I could live with, but. I'll come back to that comment. Military experience is great, but he is set in his ways. Is too much, and I don't think he would approach work with a lot of people. Brett was quick to say he knew or understood things, but when you ask follow up questions, he got offended. No comment. I'll come back to this comment. Some good background, but still abrupt. And then I'll come back to this comment as well. Um, any other comments regarding Hannah would need a lot of direction and training. Has no preconceived ideas, fresh slate handled herself well under pressure. She's familiar with the job duties and comfortable with them. She is the best choice. She's approachable, task oriented. Willing to learn and has a good attitude towards working with a lot of different people. She'd be great if all our council were under the same opinion of our vision for Credit River, but we don't have that. Would work hard. Nice, but a little too inexperienced. And then lastly, regarding David Carlson, any other comments would not hire. Set in his ways probably would listen to residents, but night, but might not follow through. He's not the right person. I just don't think so. He doesn't seem like a good fit. Seems arrogant. No comment. Arrogant doesn't answer questions fully, not prepared, too many tangents, no experience with the Met Council. Too arrogant, not a fit. And then you had several comments in here where they said none of these were a fit and your public would ask you to re advertise. So that's from your public. And then your staff. What a chance to sit down and have. Uh, question and answer panel time with these candidates. Um, same questions, general impressions regarding Brett. Willing to continue to learn military background and leadership training wants to live in this area. As relevant training and leadership and communication. Exuberant, confident and well spoken. Professional, hard to read personality was not very welcoming, a lot of experience being a leader within military environment. Seems confident and approachable. Uh, regarding Hannah Plonsky. Uh, what was your general impression somewhat already familiar of the city coming from Scott County water and soil? Less management, it's specific background, but willing to learn. Appeared genuinely interested and was extremely easy to talk to, less experienced. Outgoing, nice, knowledgeable about the area. Professional personality was very welcoming and easy to talk to with. Was a people person had good experience working with the community folks, very pleasant and refreshing. Seemed calm and collected, approachable, city experience is somewhat low. Regarding David Carlson, general impressions. A lot of planning and city administration experience impressive resume went over allotted time after several warnings. Experienced qualified, willing to talk at length on subjects. Professional, lots of experience in city administration, easygoing, tried to lead the interview process. Many different things and knowledge and involved. What strengths would each of these candidates bring to the administrator role when asked about Brett? Your staff said well spoken, already has Minnesota specific management experience and military leadership and communication training. Has many relevant examples of tasks and projects completed. Good sense of role being facilitator for city council between council and staff source of information. Could handle tough situations. Will push to get things done, even if not popular. Organization. What strengths would Hannah bring to the role? Already somewhat familiar with the city and work with our planner on soil and water as grows and fees and is approachable. Excels at interpersonal communication. Would be a good facilitator mediator, good listener, could create good rapport with councils and residents knows Credit River. People person lots of energy willing to learn appreciates the city of Credit River, River having. Worked with a number of residents and a positive attitude. She is transparent. David Carlson, what strengths would this candidate bring to the administrator, administrator role? Many years of planning and engineering experience enjoys public speaking. Broad knowledge base, many relevant project examples. Long experience with both civil engineering projects and actual city management, which may be useful for future planning as a masters in planning. Practical work experience and ability to talk to people as experience. Third question, do you feel each of these candidates create a comfortable and open atmosphere during your conversation? And did you feel that you were able to ask your questions and engage freely regarding Brett? Was approachable. No atmosphere was not comfortable and open as much as I would have liked. Yes, down to earth, easy to talk to and enthusiastic. Yes, I feel I could engage or ask questions. Yes. Regarding Hannah, yes, very kind. Yes, created a comfortable and open atmosphere, easy to engage with freely. Yes, good conversation, interested in listening. Are interested in, yeah, listening, extremely easy to talk to and appear to listen very well. Yes. Lastly, regarding David. He was a little unapproachable, but firm. Yes, atmosphere was comfortable and open, but a little hard to read his feedback. Yes, emphasized door open always to all. Yes, I feel like it could engage and ask questions, but would expect longer conversations. And yes. Describe how you believe each of these candidates would fit in with the city and its partner organizations regarding Brett. Works well with the team in the city. I do feel this candidate would fit in with the city. He was direct, but a little too direct. Oh, I'm sorry. I do not feel this candidate would fit in with the city. He was direct. But a little too direct. In current role already has experience with city administration, working with. City partner organizations. I believe that all three could fit within the city. They all would present different strengths and weaknesses. Brett would be a good organizer. Brett seems equipped to learn and fit in already familiar with state and met council requirements. Regarding Hannah, she would work great with the city staff and community. I feel she would fit in with the city and its partner organizations. She'd fit in very well, already works with city staff and partner organizations and current role with Scott County. Would excel at transparent and open communications. She would, uh, fit in very well, already works with most of them at Scott County Soil and Water Board. David Carlson seemed a little direct and forward. I feel he would fit in with the city and our partner organizations. Knowledgeable and experience from both prior roles with the type of issues that the city experiences. Has been liaison between a city and partner organizations before. Would benefit city from significant experience and knowledge base. David has many years of experience to step in, he would possibly need to learn some of the Minnesota specific requirements. And finally, uh, last question, provide any other comments that'd be helpful to the city conference deliberations. Brett brings military experience seems organized. No comment. Comment to that would be good at organizing teams, most of experiences from the army seems driven. Regarding Hannah seems kind and committed, no comment. Knows and has dealings with Credit River residents may need outside assistance at times with tough issues. However, would likely accept assistance as necessary based on examples. She would be very approachable. David Carlson seems knowledgeable. No comment. Wealth of knowledge and relevant information, well spoken, but went over on time. And then a general comment was made, all were good candidates and showed strengths that would be good for Credit River. Okay. So. At. This point typically I hand out a ballot and I ask you to consider who you feel would be the top person. Helps us. Draft our conversation. So if there's usually one. That this council agrees. The possibly thing. Don't need to talk about the person. Start a conversation efficient, but also keeps. Are you comfortable with me handing out a ballot?
Sure, yeah.
This is not an official vote. This is just simply to start the conversation.
We're just whittling down to two.
One, and if you feel there is a, oh, second, you're certainly welcome to put that first one. But if you think there's only one.
What? What if there's? What if you're not comfortable with any?
There, if you want to change. Over the ballot and then I'll read them out loud so everybody can follow along. All right, first ballot, we have a number one vote for David Carlson. Second ballot, I have a number one vote, sole vote for David Carlson. Next ballot is blank. Next ballot is blank. And then our last ballot has one and only vote for David Carlson. So three number one votes for David Carlson and two. Well, that's where conversation can begin. And I ask that we keep it to David Carlson or talk about. Other options.
Okay, thank you, Liza. Council members. Comment, discussion.
Well, I could start if you want me to, Mayor. Uh. David's very, um. Knowledgeable. Yes, he has experiences city administrator. But I don't think he would be a good fit for our city. His city was more. Complicated, which is great for him. Uh, development wise, he liked doing that. Uh, he's, I think he's an engineer by trade, um, like building things. I think in his video. Interview, he even talked about. He likes doing that. He likes. Building projects, doing things like that. And. I don't think that's what I hear our residents want in our city. We want to build. At least the people that come to me and tell me that. So. I'm not comfortable. It's a good fit for a city. That you could say, all I want to say.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anybody else have a? Comment and. Further discussion to you look like you're about.
See what everybody else says.
While I agree with the statement you made. Um. The question was specifically asked, what are you proud of? What's the accomplishment? So. I, I feel like that's, um. A different question than. I mean, you have to answer that. So. The, the couple of things that I took away, um. Some positives where he was relaxed, relaxed. He was authentic. He was articulate and he was honest. He was a talker. Um, and he didn't do any research, um, sometimes a little too, uh, authentic. Um, the one thing I thought he said that was, uh, comforting to me is I don't disagree with policy. Um, and this was verbatim. When council makes a decision, it's the right decision. Um, so. I, I don't feel like. Um. He's looking to create stuff that the council isn't. Um, and I think there is a human side that I think that, uh. He said, I, I don't think he meant to say it, but he did. Um, he talked about. Uh, one of the fractured relationships that happened due to one of his policies. And, and, and what actually came of it, he said, I still don't feel good about it. Um, not being prompted. Um, so. Yes, I think he could be, uh. He would have to be made sure to know that, uh. Keep it a little shorter. Um, make sure we listen, um, but I don't feel like he's got it, um, out for people. I think that he's. Maybe just. Some people like to talk. Um. And for me personally, I didn't think that was an issue. I think. If we were to pull the trigger, that's when I call him.
I. I'm agree with Bill. He was okay, but he's.
Okay. Jay, any thoughts? You said we have some thoughts.
You know, I liked him, I, I liked him. When we looked at his resume. Two years ago. Um. I liked. Another of the three. By resume. This time around. But after meeting and listening. Uh, to him. I actually did like David. And I think he, I think he fits. Now you can, you can say that, um. We don't want to build anything. But if you. Approach it that way, since you don't have somebody with the experience of building things. You're going to get what you get. Out of. You know, it could be a mess. To be able to deal with. And plan forward. I think it's the right person for that. And you know, you're looking at somebody with a planning degree, with planning education. You're looking at somebody that can. Help us that understands putting in force means. Which, uh, and, and understands a little bit about operating some of the systems that we have. I don't think this is where we need to go back and look for experience. We have some issues on the south side of the city. With some of the property, some of the, uh. Subordinate third districts that we have. You know, if we're not going to build anything up here. On the north end, we should really be thinking about. How do we get ourselves out of the? Uh, difficulties that we have with some systems down. South. From south, you know, so that's. I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of experience. Lot of education. And it goes beyond is. Working as a city administrator in Lancaster. What it also brings. Many other cities, towns, townships. That he's also worked with in, in other capacities as an engineer. So I, you know, I think this is, I think it's an ideal situation. For us, I don't know that he's here forever. It's, it seemed like, uh. It, it, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on his longevity. With us. But. You know, this is, uh, I think it's a good opportunity. Somebody that would understand. The ramifications of ordinances, which we need, we need to put together some ordinances. And, you know, things that would actually help us control. And, you know, things that would actually help us control. How Credit River develops, if it develops at all, or to be able to at least make sure that. It doesn't change. In ways that we wouldn't want to. So I, you know. I'm going to say that I voted for him. I'm gonna say that I supported. And I hope the rest of you do too.
Okay, thank you, Jay, um, just, you know, my comments. On, on David as well, um, yeah, I agree, he was, you know, the, the talkative piece and that came up. With several people, whether, you know, uh. Like council experience that I think, public experience, I think staff experience, you experienced that same thing, I think that is definitely. You know, look at an opportunity for improvement. That is an opportunity to understand. The situations and understand where it's time to. To wrap it up, uh, conversation and, and move on, right, uh. Without a doubt, I think, uh, definitely the knowledge and experience that he has of the, of the three candidates we talked to today is by far. Um. You know. Far and above everybody else, um, you know, he's been in situation while Lancaster has a lot more going on. Um. That doesn't mean that that automatically comes wherever he goes, right, cuz I think to, to Abe's point. His words were. You know, basically, his policies are a policy of the council, right, when we asked that specific question. Um. That was his response. Right, is that he works for the council and, and at the will of the. At the will of the, um, city, not, not his thought processes, right, so. Uh. I think, uh. A couple of the examples of when he's, you know, you know, been creative, that example he gave about working with. Um, you know, that they had a need in, in Lancaster when, you know, all childcare was gonna suddenly disappear and they had. You know, hundreds of people, you know, families that needed to have this and working with. You know, some providers are working, facilitating some logistics that didn't really cost the city anything, but it, uh. Was able to provide for the. The families that needed it, you know, was a great example of using some creative. Initiative on a project. To get that done. Those are the kinds of things, being a creative. You know, initiative, thinking outside of box, and I think. You know, as we look forward to what our needs will be in the future. Would be well served. That being said. Um. Wasn't a unanimous, you know, vote across. The council. Um. I wouldn't encourage, if there's a further discussion, any thought processes on, on how anybody'd like to move forward next.
Say we try again. And, uh, I'm not sure we need a consultant to do it. But, uh. I'd be willing to contribute my time. They're going through all the applications, anyone else that wants to do it. I'm just not comfortable with David. Um, that, that example you gave, that's a great thing that he did, okay, the childcare thing. But to me, that's government old image, that's looking for projects to do. That. I'm not quite sure why a city would get involved and try to. Bring business, childcare businesses in, and then going through all those work, that work. To me, that's something that business does. But. That's just my opinion. And I'm just afraid that. He's not going to be satisfied. With a, a. Residents that don't want to grow, that don't want projects like that. Just, I don't think he's a good fit. And I'm not comfortable, and. I hate making this decision. An hour after we've interviewed all these three and to listen to, uh. Liza. List all these things out in ten minutes, I can't comprehend all the, all the comments you said. I just can't do that, I, I need time to think. So I'm making a decision. At what I know right now and my, I can't, I can't change, can't change that.
Hey, thank you, Bill. I guess in the end of the day, i- i- if that's. What the council wishes. Um. The decision could be tabled. If, if, if you need more time to make those considerations, Bill. If that's what the council wanted to do as well. Any other thoughts?
Curious. What are our other options?
Really up to you as a council, I mean. There's a multitude of things, you can go deeper into the pile of the applicants and take a look at them, you can. Um, appoint an interim, you can. You can advertise on your own, you know, it. This is your city, this is your process to find the right person.
Liza, how many times has this happened where a council can't come. And add this to a decision, does it happen a lot? Or?
Usually through like conversation like this, usually they can come to a decision. Um. I mean, over the last three years, honestly, the market has been a lot more challenging, so I've been redoing more searches than I ever did. And I, I didn't have to. Search. The first five years, these last three years, three years ago, it was seven, last year it's five, right now I'm redoing three. So it is a very challenging time, not just to find. Candidates who have the right mix of experience and. Background that gels well with your community, but also your elected bodies are very different now too. So.
Council member Markers. Or, yeah, we all know this, but. Um. Towns like Lancaster, Wisconsin, I mean, they're small towns and. Oftentimes. In those hubs of those rural areas, they do. Proactively seek out. It's not so much that the local unit of government is looking for projects, so to speak. They're, they're being presented these issues. Um. Because. In a lot of ways, there aren't other resources there for them to do that, and so. Um, in the case of the childcare, we don't know all the situation, but hypothetically. There's invariably a small industrial park in that community, I, no doubt. And probably many people who work there are saying, oh, my children don't have, I, I can't show up for work. So cities sometimes are just. Stocked. As being that cohesive focal point to try to accomplish something. Um, sometime I even. I don't know what small town it was here six months ago, or the grocery store, there's only one in town burned out. You know, so the city kinda rally in some sense and try to bring people together, say, well, what can we do collectively as a community? Um, to try to solve those problems, so. Now, who knows actually what happened, but a lot of those rural communities, there just aren't. Other resources and sometimes cities are the, the trusted agent. And so if that's what they did, great. Um, that's one thing and. I have no doubt that that's not something they. Set out in the beginning of the year as their list of priorities, I guess. You know, so. What else are they gonna do? Um. As far as, you know, other. Other hiring processes, those are, those are hard things and. Uh, we got lucky with Lucas in, in hiring a finance person on, on a first pass and. Um, but i- it's hard to find those folks and I would offer. Um, Liza maybe was in these shoes and I was in these shoes as a first time twenty-six-year-old city administrator. So. Maybe again, just have that conversation, is, at some point, can they grow, can they? Somebody starts somewhere, and so what should you expect, somebody? In mid-career with these perfect set of skills, somebody end career or somebody earlier career and what are the goods and bads? Maybe. Just think about that a little bit too, so. How were you when you were city administrator?
I know, right, um, well, I started in the private sector first, but I was, yeah, thirty-two years old as a brand new administrator.
Did you have a managerial job before that, or did you manage a process or people?
Yes, yep, I was in project management, people management in, um, construction.
I did not.
Gotta manage one or the other, that either people or the process.
My, my, mine, mine was in, uh, county economic development, you know, so I worked through that county process and worked through county boards and. You know, one candidate, you know, who works in a counting realm. And just gotta work through that bureaucracy and get something done. Is it different? Sure, but is it, can? Yeah, they're dealing with budgets, so they're gonna be evil and they're gonna have constituents that they have to make happy and. So, I don't know, whatever those things are.
I don't think nowadays that we can find the perfect candidate, I think to your point, it's, you have to. What can you live with, I think half of. Half of it is finding a candidate who is coachable. Who's willing to grow and learn with you, and that means that you have to have the patience to, to be able to grow and learn with them. When I did one of the references on, uh, one of those candidates that you interviewed today. That specific reference said, we knew that, we know we. Cannot get a candidate that has. We knew that going into it and we were willing to grow with that person, so they were going to be sad if the person ends up leaving their role, so. I don't know.
Is how much? Time would you say is, is a good way? People, you wanna redo this?
I mean, before you advertised it again?
I feel like you should, like, get going, I don't think waiting's gonna matter at this point, you did wait and this is where you're.
And we also have a. A time limit. On Eric.
Well, so, let's talk about Eric for a second. So, to be fair, I mean, I'm, I'm, my, my first goal in working with you, but it's great, I mean, this has been. An amazing thing, discover what's going on and down which part of the road, you guys have been nothing but pleasant or. But on the flip side, I don't wanna. I, I probably more. Desire is to leave and to stay longer, um, and for me, it's more just about a question of, of a liability question. Um, as a, it's not so much about the dollars and cents of it, but. It may be something I can talk with the city attorney about, how do maybe we resolve some of those things? Um, and there's probably a way to do it, so if I could overcome that, I'm. I think I'm, um, if I can still be helpful, great, but. Let's say you go through this path again, then you hear in another month from now, you don't get perfect candidate, that's the wrong term. Set of candidates that you stick with, I mean, it can always happen, right? You know, if, if I can talk with Peter and we can just. Solve some of my anxieties of it, I'm happy that it's to stick around, uh, longer, um. Not that it would, it shouldn't affect how anything has been accomplished. Um. How we interreact or, or anything related to budgets or costs, just. Uh, dynamic there, um. But to Liza's point, you know, let's get, get it out there, but how are, how are candidates gonna see this? What, what, didn't we just have this post? You know, so.
Now twice.
Now twice and. I don't know, it's necessarily bad, but. You talk to more candidates than, than any of us.
Yeah. I mean, there is. There are some nerves about being a first-time administrator for a. A new community. It's hard, you know, in the beginning, everybody says, yep, this is what we want, we want a city administrator, and then once the city administrator is in here and trying to. Implement the things that they need to implement to get you going, then all of a sudden, there's this, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're trying to tell us what to do, well. No, not necessarily in all cases, but. I've heard that from. When I reached out to other administrators, when I did the search the first time, this would be a great opportunity, would you like to do it again? It's hard, this is hard work. It's hard work being a city administrator anyway, but. Um, for a very new community, it's really challenging. So. It's a special person that wants to do this, for sure.
So, um. So Brett, the other candidate was a clerk slash treasurer, which it wasn't a city administrator, but he acted as all three. Okay, now they could, they only have thirteen hundred people in their community, but. Is that something that? That, uh, that, uh, Lucas could eventually. Is, is it too much work for one person? I mean. Even for a short period of time, I mean, four years ago, we, we ran without a, a city administrator. We had a finance director, we. Didn't even have a clerk here at the time. Now we have a clerk here full-time, now we have a finance director here full-time.
Could probably run it, I think you could probably stick it out for sixty days and, you know. You're through an election, you threw a budget. You had an audit coming, so it's a really busy time for Lucas.
Yeah.
Um. You know, so those are. From a timeline standpoint. You know, that now might be the best time in terms of any of it.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, so there's that, uh.
Okay.
You're, if you had a. Younger person doing this, and that's the wrong term, somebody with less experience, uh, uh, you, they might be. Cheaper, I don't know what that means. You know, so you could, you know, whatever that offer includes, you know, so are you willing to take a risk on this person? Knowing. Risk is a strength of work too, if Amy's here to help and, and Lucas is here to help and you folks aren't absent.
Right.
You know, and. As I think I mentioned to you, if this person needs to be just a kind of facilitator and. Alright, and. That's why I try to. And not lead you down some. Different path and be responsive, and if that's the person you can get, okay, that person doesn't have a whole ton of experience, but. There's people here to help and it might be slightly cheaper, and if it all falls flat in its face. What's could go wrong? I mean, you're not, you're, for good or for bad, you're, so if you're, so you have a lawsuit that's on the books or, right? You know, so you have an attorney that's guiding you on that, you have. Blair, uh, your planner, um, who should be guiding. A lot of your land, using comp plan stuff, and that's the big picture. So, uh, Shane, your city engineer with great experience and he's working with developers and. Find it and development agreement, so this role comes, becomes to be a lot of juggling. And just kind of keep both balls moving forward and. Um, talking with you folks and smiling face and I get calls and emails and try to respond and. Um. That's, it's a little bit of an art that you'll learn.
Yeah.
I'm just talking too much, I'll spare up, so. But, but if you have a young person, a younger person with a less experience, they're probably slightly. Less expensive, but you're gonna, but you're gonna pay for that, and that sense, you're gonna have to expect them to learn up and. But they're gonna show up every day, not that others wouldn't, but they're gonna come, you know, a hundred and ten percent. And will there be mistakes? Sure, but. Are they easily manipulatable? One of the comments.
Couple of the comments, yeah.
I, I agree with you, um, the inexperienced with the one candidate, I mean, yes, great personality, and she, she. She could talk to everyone, it was very comfortable talking to her. But I can't get around the fact that she's never managed people and she's never managed processes. If, if she had a little bit more managerial. You know, even a year. Um.
Yeah, I agree with that, that piece of it, right, cuz there is, you know, we do have staff. And, and staff needs to be managed and, and correctly.
Yeah.
Um, and, and facilitate, facilitate their needs, right, we need, we need somebody who can coach them up and. Right, and that, that's a, the next comment is, is on this is, you know, you had a piece of the whole thing is, and. Is keeping us. Out of. More lawsuits and, you know, experience does that, right, knowing, knowledge of state statute and processes and, and, uh. What gets us in trouble, what doesn't get us in trouble is an experience-based. Thing, um. In, in, in building out, again, we keep talking about building out what, okay, what is it that we need to, to build up, well, it's, you know, not. Things, it's, it's. Policies and ordinances is, you know, really what in. Plans, that's what.
Planning.
Yeah, and, and, and so it's. Um. That takes experience to, to understand how to facilitate those conversations.
If you don't think about what you can guess. And to establish, make sure. That it. Doesn't happen. You're gonna be unhappy with the result that you wind up with. I'm very unhappy. I like big experience, I really do.
I like big experience. I really don't.
You know, another um. Positive, by the way, this is one that is interesting. The opportunity that he took when. Uh reaching out, finding other funding, other grants uh.
Right.
And the Lancaster Community Foundation, which the uh city had never asked. For any funding. And they were more than willing to work with the city and and provide some grants.
I think he has a good understanding of that. Uh he also comes from. Both, actually, both of the. Candidates that have administrative experience. Came from communities that. Completely were self-service. So Credit River is a very, very weak. City or community. Uh. This kind of sandwiched in, I mean, we are a true. True bedroom community. There there is no. Real estate business here. There's no no true industry. Uh there are, you know, there's a lot of things that go in a community that aren't here. People leave the community to go get those.
Mm hmm.
Uh. We don't, uh, we are able to contract their services. For everything, for literally everything, because it surrounds us. Uh. Brett did not have anything within their area, and as a matter of fact, they were the hub. For uh. Surrounding townships and then, you know, pretty much everything in the county, they provided services. They uh they're fired, they have a fire department because they need one. They can't contract from somebody else. They provide services to others. They had uh, you know, they had their own police department. Uh they use the common facilities, but uh you know, that's. Now there's, there's a lot of things that go along with that that they have to do. Lancaster, if anybody's actually looked at a map. Is not a bedroom community to any place else. I mean, closest city is probably kind of blind there forty five. Forty five minutes away uh and. Approximately the same size. They're also in the driftless area, which is uh, you know, which is. Very, very extreme topography. It's not easily developable. There's a lot of stuff. So when you talk about extending. Uh services for the county to uh. You know, to to a prison, it's a mile and a half away, it's store services. You know, they're not just going through, you know, a flat little little area. There's a lot to that. What I liked about the discussion that we had, uh. You know, I and I think it was actually at the table about some of that. He had actually talked about uh. How he also took care of writing contracts and the agreements for some of that. Which, you know, preserved their rights. For the stuff that extended outside the city. So the city wasn't just out there building something. And having and having everybody else. Develop and hook up to it. So you know, there's, there's this, there's this understanding, I think, that he has of, you know, the of what is through infrastructure. I mean, we're gonna get development at some point. You know, the question is. Do we, do we make sure that it gets paid for by the development itself, or do we stick the taxpayers part? Uh you know, in the future, do we uh? Are we able to actually to look at it in a way? That we can make it livable for everybody and try to preserve what we have for our rural character. You know, without getting ourselves into a lot of lawsuits. From other people's own property and all of a sudden told them they can't really. Build on their property. They can't develop their property. They can't do with their property what they want with it, you know, which is. Which is something, you know, unless you own the property. You know, you really, it's it's difficult in the United States with our constitution of somebody. That you can't do something with your own property. So, you know, we have. We have to think about that. We have to think about. How do we effectively changes of the future? Of fifty years, looking at fifty years from now. Based on what we're doing. Uh you know, for. Really, it's it's just, it's important. That we actually plan for this, that we actually. Make sure that we can put some ordinances in place. I think somebody with the the experience of doing that. And everything else would first make sure that. You know, the development actually pays for itself. That could be its own breaks on development. By actually getting, making it expensive to develop. But actually, what that is, it's keeping, it's keeping the uh. You know, the developer, and just making a quick cash grab, putting their stuff and escaping with their money. Leaving the community to pay for it over the future. Having somebody in place that can actually that understands that process. And make sure that all of those things. Are actually built into the into the cost of doing that. So, you know, that may be the brakes on, it may be something we can do something different with. I mean, there were, he had some pretty good, had some pretty good conversations and his long conversations and me being a long-winded person, I understand. So so council member side of that, you have a mayor of. So I don't know. All the history of of the tradition development or the whatever they're called. But it would be fair to expect they'll be back.
Yep.
Um and. Uh whether they get through the the gauntlet of of the rezoning, the comp plan amendment, whatever. You're gonna have to have one of your, you're gonna have a city attorney. Your city engineer or and or your city administrator. In a room, talking about those development things.
Mm hmm.
And looking for extractions that are legal, mind you, but nevertheless. You're gonna want that person leading that conversation. Because the council is going to be one making the choice of approval or disapproval. By the end of the day, there's gonna be some negotiation in terms of what those development agreements. Are able to include and. Stronger hand you have at that table.
Yes.
That's a fact. Uh it can be ten other reasons why that's wrong, but that's a true statement.
Yeah, I mean, we have that having that experience. We have to have a basis to turn something down to. I mean, once that, once that application is there and it's and it's and it happens and everything else is there. If we just flat out say we don't want it because we don't like it. Then Credit River just is is welcome to another lawsuit. And you know, we're not. We're not really equipped to win them at that point. You know, I think you're better is to hire. I mean, we should be hiring, I'm not sure if we could. For this. You know, to to set us up for the future. We really should.
Um Liza. Want to reference her question here, um. Is the reference information, is that something we could talk about? In public?
Fortunately.
That's what I thought.
I unfortunately, unfortunately.
Yeah, you know, it's fair. I just wanted to make sure before. Uh because there's a. A couple of statements that. I think from. The references that verify some of this.
So Mr. Mayor, for me, I I believe if we're not five, oh, we just go back to the drawing board personally. I feel like um. We're we're doing a disservice to the public. Um. I do think we are going to have a challenge finding someone that doesn't have everything right. Right? I I hire people all the time and I have to just weigh what the pros are versus the cons. Um. If if someone talks too much. You know, I can, I can deal with that. If someone's uh uh rude and overconfident and not approachable, that's a, that's a. One we want to be aware of. And when there's concerns of of that, uh of a of a fit in a community, um. And uh having a panel, having five people do it, I think we should really uh keep that in mind. If it was all based on. Um he was doing things that we're not gonna do in this city. That's a different city and it's circumstantial, so. When I ain't hearing from the two that didn't, um that it's not a good fit, I would just say, let's go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, I mean, I think. We gotta get closer to agreement than. A three two. I don't want to do it on a three two. I I I don't, I don't, I don't think that. Um uh uh we need to have better support for this person when whoever comes on board, right? It needs to be somebody we all can get behind and. And move forward with and and that's, that is, you know, um. I think a great point, you know, made there that it. No matter what, even if you find somebody with some flaws. But if everybody can get behind it, understanding what you're going forward with. And know that you have some work to do to. Um, you know, make sure that we don't let those flaws be that that person's legacy at Credit River is the the key there. Um.
Right, so what's the question then? Become, are we proceeding on our own or are we using our consultant, like? Recommendations, we stay with our consultant?
Yeah, I would, I would agree that we need to, you know, talk to Liza about. The agreement that we have and what our options are exercising. Doing it again, because I don't know that we, you know. The homework that gets put into these packets and to this work, I don't think that we can accomplish on our own.
I will tell you, this is more work than my companies that I work for had ever done. And I don't know if we need that level of. I. I don't know if we need that level. Of work.
Yeah, if I could make a recommendation, I think um. For those of us that would like to see the resumes and browse through them, let's let's give the resumes, right? And for those that don't and want to be. Uh fed the information, then I think we could go a two-pronged approach. Um, so. I I personally love the packet, but I do feel like um, you know. We have to give extremely. Um specific requirements. And um. Sometimes those requirements are very hard to verbally state um. When you're saying, yeah, we're we're, we are open to that diamond in the rough, but I can't tell you what makes a diamond in the rough. Right? And and what makes that new person, that that emerging candidate worthwhile? So sometimes, you know, on paper, it doesn't. Just flash at you, but having a couple of people taking a look at resumes, I'd be happy to look at all the resumes as well. Um and be able to say. Yeah, the this is one that I think we should also take a look at. So that's my personal opinion.
Could I get you to clarify, are you talking about looking at? Round three, or are you talking about looking at? The other resumes that we've collected?
Uh depending on how we've stated, did we go back and say we've already? Uh the the answer is a no, or is it how, what do we need with those candidates?
So um. You know, I. I can present the rest of the resumes that you did not see. My part of the process, I would be. Out, I've done the second search, so I mean, anything after that would have to be at a cost basis.
Mm hmm.
But you know, you can have access to those resumes, and if you decide to. Take the process from there, then you know, I can support you in whatever way you need.
Did you say there was no applications that were from the private sector? Because we didn't ask people to reply from the private sector.
So though. There are candidates from the private sector. They did not move forward as semifinalists.
Okay.
So uh the second round. So this would basically become a third round? Anything moving forward?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
The council, if uh. You folks did appoint. Uh a little committee uh. There and council member Zantel. Bamboozled Amy to come into here and uh Lucas with Councilman Margaret and uh. Abe, um I don't know if you wanted to think about that, um but another challenge with that is. I mean, that was, that was an insular process. I mean, it's a far more standard hiring process. It's how do you get the the public's? Input into it. It would certainly would not be as robust as what you have. You could have a meet and greet and some of the other stuff, but it probably wouldn't be. To the extent that you have. I mean, as long as you accept that going in. Yeah, we'll come up with something that's fair and reasonable, but. Uh what was good, what Liza was able to accomplish. So think about that.
I think I'd appreciate a proposal. From Liza on going back and and. You know, assisting with the search again.
Absolutely. And I can provide different options, whether it's to start.
Mm hmm.
From advertising point forward, or if it's just simply to do. Backgrounding for any of those other candidates that you're gonna be taking a look at, so yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think I would appreciate that. And if if we could at least look at that proposal and see, what what would we consider? What our options are. I think that would be helpful.
Liza, did you post the job on LinkedIn?
Yes.
So could at the same time, we also get all the the other candidates that we we did not move forward?
Mm hmm. Okay, that's what I'm proposing, if that's what you.
I think that would.
But I'll tie it up a quote, that's just, that's our.
That's our data. Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I would like to see that at the same.
I think that would be the appropriate way to handle it, Abe, is because then, as as she mentioned, if she comes back with a. Proposal that with a couple of different options of. Either A, starting from zero reposting, or B, going with. A handful or a couple of candidates in that list of backgrounded and stuff like that, there's probably two different. Work efforts that go into those that, you know, would come up with two different proposals. So I think. Both of those, I think, are reasonable. Ways to move forward.
Well, that is, we also need to make sure that we secure our. Administrator for the for the uh for an extended interim.
Let's fix this liability thing.
Yeah, let's make sure it's concerned.
Just fix it. I thought we did, kind of.
This. I'll talk with Peter, but fundamentally, it's. This could be a bad idea anyway, just to transform the.
I like it already.
Transform the uh the contract into a a temporary.
Employee.
Employee. And that way, as a temporary employee, you're covered by all the uh communities. That are right, you can, you can, well, you can blend down the wage structure, so it doesn't have a financial impact at the city. It doesn't have uh. Uh it doesn't carry any benefits, you know, something to that effect that. That's kind of where I'm.
Mm hmm. Do we start paying payroll tax though, when we do that?
Yeah, but that's why you want to bear, you can, we can blend down the wage.
Oh, right, right, right. Not the, not the same way. Yeah, right. So you think about when you hire the contractor, you're paying for their ability to pay their stuff and whatnot, so that, and you take that burden off. Eric, it just passes through a different.
So still, we'll come up with a hundred dollar an hour rate, and so maybe that's ninety two and then.
And that's um. That's more beneficial than just like. Getting an insurance poli- a personal liability policy or something that.
Only because of the, because of statutory needs that are.
Okay.
Maybe ten other reasons, but that's a bit.
So if you then, so to that point, would you guys be okay if Eric uh connected with Peter and and uh just made sure that there's connection? Well, I think, I think we just need him, you know, we just give him direction to bring a proposal to us to our next council meeting. Um we can make, act on it then.
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, sure.
All good?
Absolutely.
Going forward?
Yeah.
You look like you have more to say.
Yeah, I do have more to say.
I I I always can look at Abe, but I can tell when he's got more to say.
So I think what would really be helpful for this group is especially for the two of you that did not want to move forward. If you could just put some thoughts down and give it to Eric. What what was it, right? Because as we go back to the table. I I'm fine, but what was it?
Mm hmm.
Right? Was it? Um experience was, you know, so that we can go back and say, okay. So I think he he had some great qualities, and I'm not. I'm not stopping for him at this, it's fine, I'm okay with that, but he had some great qualities. There were some. There were some, some faults too, right? So what is it that stopped? This one from coming? So I think it would be great if we want to say it here or just. Put in a piece of paper or email to Eric, then we can, as we look for the. For that next, I think that'd be helpful.
Mm hmm. I'd be happy to do that. You'll get it tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Have you ever hired though, someone where? Or? Have you ever looked at something and you just don't feel right?
Yes, actually, I've very much done that.
Sometimes it's hard to put it on.
And and that's okay.
It is.
It is.
So, yeah, right, agreed.
But I will give you bullets.
And sometimes I've been pleasantly surprised and other times pleasantly not surprised.
You can, you can about flip a coin on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the hard part, right?
Yeah, so think about it and see if you can put some thoughts around it. That's all I'd ask.
Yeah.
I just. Don't, don't think he's a good fit just for the sake of getting an administrator.
So he didn't knock his socks off, so it.
No.
Okay.
And it. I felt that way the other time around, but. We agreed. I just don't want it. Backfiring again.
Yeah, I don't want to make a mistake.
Yep.
So, yeah. I don't think anybody disagrees.
I won't be paralyzed either and. Wait until we find the perfect person.
Yeah.
And maybe one will pop out of it.
You don't know, right? Things could have changed with somebody else's situation between. You don't know, right? Things could have changed with somebody else's situation between when they started this process and it did today, right? That you get past the new year and, and, uh. Things often change.
There seems to be a lot of turnover with city administrators.
It's a tough bit.
It's getting harder.
Yeah. If you look at some of those, I have a, I have a coworker that is on a. Planning commission in a city, northern suburb city that. Is, has just hired, hired one and, and, uh. Their council tortured the one before. It, it, it's, yeah, you, you, that it gets, uh. It's a tough spot, right? Because you're the center of that attention and, and. Everything that happens in that city. Ultimately, you know, the council gives that person the direction and to act that out, right? And, and if things don't go well, well, guess what happens? You know, so.
Which isn't fair to you.
Yeah, you're right.
That's why we paid a big bucks.
But it's. Some administrators, I mean, they're all, there's a lot, a lot of good. I mean, they really are, they put people in a lot of work and a lot of the life and they dedicate a lot of time to it and. You know, invariably, you're dealing with a lot of stressful situations and sometimes things just go south and. Our world is a. Challenging place right now. People. You know, what we see out in the world, we take it into our little meetings, and sometimes it comes out against people. You know. We're talking about a. You know, a side yard there, so. So that we're getting into constitutional law, I mean, we, really?
Yeah. It is. Motions run high. Okay, well, I think we have direction for everybody.
Yeah, I'm good.
You wanna make a motion?
Uh, yeah, make a motion to adjourn, are we at that place? So do we have a motion to? Do we need a motion to have that?
Alright, so. We'll, we'll make a motion to do.
Yeah.
The, don't, don't adjourn yet. How about you, you start with the motion, Jay.
No, I think let's have the two guys that didn't wanna finish it. I make a motion that, uh, Liza come back with the two proposals and give us the. Uh, uh, other. Applicants and, uh, so we can review those and. And then we'll. Move on with that.
Okay. You good on the motion? You're, you're gonna second that?
Why didn't the other guy second it?
Bill did.
Oh, he did.
Yeah, yeah, he did, he jumped right up. Alright, motion is second to, um, direct, uh, Liza to come back with the additional proposals related to a search for, uh, city administrator. Um, as well as provide us the, uh, um. The resumes for the candidates that did not move forward, um, all in favor, say aye. Anybody posed? Hear none, motion passes.
Can I make the motion to adjourn, please?
Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor? Everybody posed, hear none, motion passes. Thank you, everybody.